Good evening, welcome to the Thursday, October 4th Board of Selectmen's Meeting. Please stand for the salute to the flag.
It's not on, it's not on yet.
Okay, are we on now? Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution that stands under our individual liberty and justice for all.
I think I'm on now.
Oh yes. Opening comments, Mr. Lombard.
I'm all set.
Mr. Burrell?
No, I think we should just roll. I want to roll if you have something.
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes of 9:20 18.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the minutes of 9:20 18 as presented.
Further discussion?
Nope.
No. Those in favor?
Aye.
Citizens for, if you wish to speak please, Mr. Rogers.
Pete Rogers, 44 Pearl Road, Nahant. I'd like to bring to your attention some of the claims about this special town meeting that are circulating on the Internet. I've heard some of the arguments to the effect that this is an unnecessary waste of...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, since we're starting the meeting at 6:30 early, I would have the opening comments start at 7:00 so we can run through the other items on the agenda because a lot of people...
I believe the people who are coming are here though.
Oh, you think so?
Sure.
Alright.
And if someone comes later, I'll have them get up.
Alright, women.
Thank you. One of the claims was that it was an unnecessary expense of public monies and so on and so forth. My response to that would be it's a lot cheaper to send out the FinCom book and so on than it is to face a lawsuit from Northeastern having to do with this new bylaw. The second thing is, in essence, the same argument that a perfectly reasonable suggestion on the surface of it was, why don't we just try it out, see how it works out until April? Well, that gives seven months for Northeastern to decide, to file a notice of intent, thereby sending us to Superior Court because they've closed the door to DEP. But it's sort of ironic that they were in such a hurry before that they insisted on August 27th, the Monday before Labor Day, now they want to slow it down. Probably it should have been decided in an annual town meeting in the first place. But the people are aggrieved, they think it's anti-democratic. Other people were aggrieved too, and probably they would have turned around and ended up with a petition of their own. So we're right back where we would have started anyway.
Thank you. Just come up, please. Go ahead, you can state your name, please.
I've never done this before. My name is Ann Bromer, I live at 29 Willow Road. And I am now a voter in Nahant after many years voting in Boston because of the issues that we face here. This was a very, very fear, hugely crowded meeting, people sweating, not feeling well. It was crafted over a six-month period. It was counted, the votes, many times, and we won. I think that those who have lost need to be good sports about it. You lost. We won, those of us who worked so hard for this. And this is now the law. The Attorney General has signed it. Many, many communities along the seashore have this. And we should be done with it.
Thank you. Jean?
Just to follow up on what she just said, and it's so succinct, would we be having this meeting, would we be doing this if the vote was different? I'd suggest not.
Thank you, Jean.
Susan Sherry, 6 Wilson Avenue in Nahant, 25-year Nahant resident. I guess what, I was pretty stunned when I heard there was going to be another town meeting after we'd like engaged in what the process for decision-making is. And whatever you think about the outcome, there's a process and you make decisions and that's how the system works. And it really ends up feeling, you know, I was there for those whole, that time, hot and sweaty, but that's the process, I participated. And this ends up feeling like it devalues both my participation and my vote to redo this again.
Thank you.
What I was going to ask and suggest has nothing to do with the bylaws, is this a correct form to...
Anything you want.
Alright, a couple of years or a year and a half ago, whatever, I brought up the, about gas leaks, left information with Jeff at that time and our attorney, and I was hoping you guys that something would be happening with that. What's happened with Lawrence and Andover, that I think it's, can we step up on doing something? I mean, I had a woman tell me about, she was getting gas in her house, she didn't even have a gas line, it was coming in through the water. So I think that's something that we need to address. Another thing also, about Northeast or whatever, I was hoping to have an event on Monday, just a sign-making thing. I was told I couldn't be there with a four-by-eight banner earlier today by the police, so I'm looking forward to getting the okay from you guys to actually have a, it would be okay to be down there on Monday, if that's the correct form to do this or not. I tried speaking to Enzo earlier and there was, he had things going on. Okay.
A what Monday? What'd he say?
What kind of...
Sign-making. I couldn't speak to him. It's for Northeast, the banner I got is the one that's been across the street for a couple of months. No expansion for Northeastern. If you want to come down, you want to make a lawn sign, I'll have all the materials that you want, bring the kids or whatever. But I had a four-by-eight banner down there today and I was asked to take it down by the police. It was nice enough to take it down, whether I needed to or not. Do I actually even need to be here to ask you folks if I can go down there with a banner?
Alright. Would you look into that, please?
Yep.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
You talked about the gas lines, and he did bring up this at a town meeting two years ago?
A year and a half ago, whatever, two previous.
And he was dead-on with it, we need to move and we need somebody like him to look into that stuff because there are major gas leaks. And, I mean, it was proof put in that that was a disaster not that long ago. So he has good material on it, it was kind of shut down at the last town, that town meeting, and I was really disappointed with that. So I would have you maybe talk to Tony about it, starting something up with that. Is that okay, Nick?
Yep, that's fine.
Alright, good.
Thank you.
Hi, Jeff Thomas, 16 Little Nahant Road. The cold, cold winter that we had, if you remember when everything was so frozen, and the telephone pole got hit on Little Nahant Road. I had a gas leak in my basement. I called the gas company, the guy came out, he went inside and out all over the place for about a half an hour, came back inside and said that it was not an internal leak, that because it was so cold and everything was frozen, that there was a leak under the road that couldn't find the way out it usually found out, and was following our cold water pipe up into the house. So he proceeded to tell me that they were going to put me on a list and that they would get to it eventually. Unfortunately, it warmed up and the gas leak stopped. But in July, I was still calling the gas company, trying to find someone who knew anything about it. There was a subsequent guy that came out right the same week and said he smelled no gas. So basically, everyone would look at that and say there was no gas leak. And I had made them dig deeper in the records. Finally, in July, somebody came out and brought, and then had a crew come out and they dug up the road and replaced the pipe, which presumably repaired the leak. I won't really know until the next cold winter. But, you know, I just want to add that to the fact that there are things like this going on everywhere, and sooner or later, something bad is going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank Enzo and Mr. Taylor for doing the right thing and stepping up and calling this December meeting. You too heard the concerns of many in this town pertaining to the timing and the procedure of that meeting that we had back in the summer. Thank you.
Tom Costin, 369 Nahant Road. I wanted to read a petition here. "We, the 592 undersigned residents and citizens and registered voters of the town of Nahant," and I might add that this, the number of people who signed this petition far exceeds the number of people who actually attended the special town meeting. "We request the Board of Selectmen to uphold the vote taken at the August 27, 2018 special town meeting, whose purpose was to approve the wetlands bylaw, also known as Article 3 in the special town meeting warrant. As residents of the town, we seek to preserve the democratic process of our town meeting governance and direct the Board of Selectmen to move on from this activity and focus on the more important issues which face this town. Honor the votes that were cast by 563 registered voters who attended the special town meeting. Refrain from spending additional monies on a special town meeting. Respect the work that will be required by town support staff and resources. Address the many other priorities where the town needs the Board of Selectmen's time and attention, just as we've heard here with the issues of gas. We believe the Wetlands Protection Bylaw is a proactive regulation in line with the majority of coastal communities like Nahant to help protect all citizens in our community. We further believe that a vote for this Wetlands Protection Bylaw is a vote to restrict Northeastern University from development at East Point. Therefore, we, the signatories below, citizens of Nahant, respectfully request the Board of Selectmen to rescind their vote made on Thursday, September 20, 2018, to hold a special town election on Saturday, December 1, 2018." And may I present you with the signatures.
Hi, Tom Costin, 54 Mayola Road, Nahant, Massachusetts. I stand here and I would want to take a few, just a few minutes to give you a little of my background and tell you why I'm going to be up at this time to say the few words I'm going to say. 92 years of age, was elected to the City Council in Lynn after two years in the United States Marine Corps in 1946. At age 21, I was a freshman at Boston College. My master's degree by the degree at Boston College was Government and History. I became a City Councilor in Lynn at age 21. Had eight years as a City Councilor at age 29, I became the youngest mayor in the city of Lynn. And I went on to get my master's degree at Salem State University in History and Education. I have two degrees, I have two honorary degrees, one from the University of Massachusetts at Amherst, and one from the New England School of Law, based on education. I stand here today because I am a little bit concerned that we're talking about democracy. We're talking about the most pure form of democratic activity we can have, and that's that a town meeting member, as a town meeting member, coming and voting for the most important issues of the town. I, this is the first time I've ever heard of a town meeting vote being overturned by two members of a board, or trying to turn it over. The people have voted. Now, if you go ahead and have another town meeting on this very same issue, what's going to stop the people who just presented you with over 500 names to come up with another 500 names? And we have another vote? And we do it over and over again? And that's exactly what's going to happen. You have to listen to the people. You are the public servants of the people. The people have spoken with the letters they've given you, they spoke back a short while ago in this hall and told you what they wanted. And it's up to you to follow through and make sure it does happen. I'm a little bit concerned too with what's happening in the town. We can't get records from boards and commissions. We can't get even records out of the computer because the computer has been, something happened to the computer. I think that what we have to do is to let's straighten out what's happening here in town and let's go ahead and let the people make the decisions of what should take place in town, not the board. You are not the rulers. You are the public servants, and the people have spoken. They don't want a second town meeting on this one issue that's already been decided."
Hello. My name's Michelle Capano, I live at 29 Ocean Street, Nahant. So it's very hard to come off of listening to both Mr. and Mr. Costin, but I think it's important to recognize that we need to restate something that happened a couple of weeks ago. So we received a letter in the town dated September 13, 2018, to Margaret Burrell, the town clerk, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Office of the Attorney General. And it stated, "For Article 3, we approve the article from the town meeting that was held on August 27, 2018." And in the letter that was presented and sent to the town was the analysis of the law. And it states, "Based on the Attorney General's standard of view, we approve the bylaw adopted under Article 3, and it has been long recognized that towns have a broad authority to adopt bylaws to protect wetland resources in their communities, and to do so by way of a general bylaw rather than a zoning bylaw as the town has done here. The bylaw adopted under Article 3 is similar to many Wetlands Protection Bylaws approved by this office. So we discern no conflict between Article 3, the bylaw, and the Constitution laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, whom we approve it." So I think it's important to recognize that, you know, with the Attorney General's approval and the voice of the residents in the town, we ask you to really think about what the residents are asking for and hopefully respectfully reconsider that vote that you made. And let's move forward so we can focus on the important other issues in the town. Thank you.
Hi, Christian Bowda, 3 Swallow Cave Road. I noticed from looking at tonight's agenda that the board is going to be going into executive session at the end of the meeting, and I believe that is to hear from the appraiser who's put an appraisal on his point, and also to hear from the eminent domain lawyer. Maybe everybody here needs to be reminded, but the funds that paid for that work came from the public. It was funds donated to the Nahant Preservation Trust and then in turn gifted to the town and generously accepted by the town to do that work. I will say that in the interest of transparency and so that we all understand this process and so there's no rumors spread around town, which is going to not be based on facts, I hope, encourage the selectmen to share the details of the reports, either the appraisal or the report from the eminent domain lawyer, with the public as soon as feasibly possible, just so we have that issue of transparency addressed. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I address that? I was called within the last couple of days from a member of the community on the eminent domain. He advised me at that time that they have a group of citizens that will fund the eminent domain. It will not be put on the back of taxpayers. Whatever the cost is involved in this eminent domain, which we'll hear tonight, they're going to fund it, whether it's 5 million, 10 million, they have the warehouse, to write check to the town. Because as you know, the board feels, you know, we can't afford, the town cannot afford this procedure. We don't have, the town budget is, you know, rate maxed out. So we have no money for anything like that. And we're not going to have that, I'm not going to vote for eminent domain unless someone comes forward like this group, and they're going to underwrite the complete procedure, and which is great news. I shared it with the town administrator, the other two members of the Board of Selectmen. The phone calls, and this individual is, I am, actually, just, them found it, is just generous individual, and the people with him are going to be very generous too, because this thing could cost millions of dollars. And they're going to fund the complete package. So I feel very, very good about that. Very good. Because as you well know, I mean, for these people to step up and to mention, we have no idea what the total cost of that's going to be. We have no idea. I know it's going to be in the millions, and for them to underwrite the whole thing, that's huge. Very big. So that's a very good, and I won't give you his name because he wants it kind of private, but, which is huge for the town of Nahant. So that's a possibility that could really, I mean, that whole bylaw, it just, it would be a mute point because if we take it by eminent domain, the property up at Northeastern, that's going to be the ballgame. And they have the money, I know they do, and the individuals to put up millions of dollars to make sure Northeastern doesn't proceed with any more expansion programs, which is huge. That's, the ultimate goal here is to stop Northeastern and to prevent them from building anything up there. This is a small town, small community, and we want to keep it that way. I do. And that's why I voted, you know, the way I vote. Because this is not, we're not going to have 350 more students and professors and next thing you know, they'll be moving, you know. But I want to share that with you tonight because I was given the liberty to share it. And I knew it was going to be tonight that I could share that with everyone. So that's great news.
There is a possibility that the cost of that could rise to $56 million. It's also a requirement that a community vote by two-thirds the permission for the selectmen to do a taking by eminent domain. Are you sure these people are committed to that kind of money or more? And if, for some reason, they aren't, if you vote this, the taxpayers are on the hook for the rest of it. As an old friend of mine once said, "Sometimes free isn't cheap."
Trust me, this selectman will not vote for that unless that money is in the bank. Because that whole process, before we take that undertaking, okay, the money, whatever the cost is, has to be in the coffers of the town of Nahant. Because once we, once we take it, we own it, and then we have to pay. So there's a whole procedure in that. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, we're not going to, you know, if this doesn't happen, whatever the, we can't proceed. I don't believe the town will proceed with an eminent domain. We just can't afford it.
Carl Jenkins, 339 Nahant Road. Pete, I love you, but what I want to make sure of is that we do not start some fake news in this entire debate. $56 million, I don't know where they came from. I've been doing valuations for 40 years, and I can tell you, it's not going to be $56 million. So I really want to make sure that that gets nipped in the bud before that makes it into the press, before it makes it into rumors around town, because it's just not true. So I'm with Selectman Lombard, why don't we see what's going to happen? It's not going to go forward unless it's funded, and we've got promises that says it will do it. So I think getting all excited about that and coming up with fake news now is not going to help this process. And that's all I've got to say.
Hi, Michelle Capano, 29 Ocean Street. So one thing to clarify, because Mr. Rogers continually wants to put other information out in the public domain, is the action around eminent domain taking is still a process. And that process has not been clarified yet, and until you have your meeting in private in executive session and decide what that process is, because we've heard Mr. Taylor say he's a processed guy, we need to understand what that process is. So putting out any more information or making public comments, dispelling it's going to cost X dollars, Y dollars, all of this information is disingenuous to all the residents in the town, and anybody that does that should be ashamed of themselves. Okay? We've heard plenty of misinformation from other people that are in this room tonight, and so we should just move forward, focus on the priorities, focus on the priorities and importance of the town, and let's see what we can do as we try to achieve the common objectives.
Tom Costin, 369 Nahant Road. I don't always agree with Pete, but in this particular case, I agree with Pete that there are certain, some times when there are things that come up that you don't know about. And because of that, I think it would probably be wise for the selectmen to go back. The Wetlands Protection Bylaw, which we have just passed, that is our one hope that can slow things down. slow things down. And I would hope that you would consider that as an immediate measure to reinstate that in the event all of these other things don't come through, all the price tag was up too high. Thank you.
First point, I would just like to get some information from the gentleman as to where the figure of fifty-six, was it, million dollars came from?
It's basically a simple layman's calculation. The assessed value of the property is six million dollars. Their intended investment is fifty million dollars in the building. One of the things I don't know about is how long this will play out, what the risks are of a counterclaim from Northeastern and so on and so forth.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Continue.
Okay, then just very quickly, the first part of what I'm going to say is going to sound irrelevant, but it actually is relevant, so please stay, please bear with me for a minute. I was at a meeting in another town two nights ago. And the issue was a commercial business in a residential area that people felt was violating the zoning laws. And as the meeting went on, which went on for four hours, and it turned out it was the fourth meeting they'd had about it, people got up and said that their lives were being ruined. And this was about a string of lights and a van parked in a yard and a little speaker. They said their lives were being ruined. It turned out there were twelve lawsuits going on, on both sides, some originated by the business, some by the people. Peoples got up and started crying when they talked about how their lives were being destroyed by living adjacent to this business. And this had been the fourth meeting and there was no resolution. Now, what I see is that a lot worse can happen with this situation. So what my request is, I hear a lot of people in town talking about each other. There's a lot of that going on. And what I want to request is that people start communicating with each other. Start having conversations with the people that you disagree with. Hear their point of view. Listen to each other's point of view. And because you wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have wanted to have been in that meeting. It was the most horrible contentious thing over the most petty little issues, all because people would not talk to each other. So I'm requesting that we start talking to each other.
Marilyn Mahoney, I live at one-seventy-nine Willow Road. I personally want to thank Richie Lombard for advocating for openness and transparency with the public. I firmly agree with Miss Both Costins here this evening that democracy has spoken. The public, at Public Town Meeting, we had a vote. I've been using the analogy of, I live with all men and we watched the Patriots, and I'm reflecting on a game in which it was a terrible snowstorm. The Patriots were playing the Steelers. Adam Vinatieri hit, he got the field goal. We won the game. You didn't hear people complaining about the snowstorm. You didn't hear them complaining about the passion of the fans. And you didn't hear the Steelers say, "I didn't like this score. Let's play this game again." And I'm not liking what's happening to us here in Nahat to a game. This is a very serious issue. I certainly want you as selectmen to go into negotiations from a position of strength. And to do that, we have to uphold this bylaw. It's not just about Northeastern, it's about being neighborly and looking out for each other. But it also gives you some strength for future negotiations. So I strongly encourage you to rescind the vote that you took at the last meeting. Thank you.
Roger, you came late. Would you like to speak?
Roger Pocinski, Swallow Cave Road. I'm sorry I came late. Yeah, I would just really like to reiterate Marilyn's wonderful point. Two-hundred-and-eighty-seven people voted for the bylaw on August twenty-seventh. We've heard a lot of complaints, the room was too hot. The room was too hot for both parties, not just one party that was participating in the voting. We now have almost six-hundred people in the last week and a half that have signed a petition, really asking the three of you to reevaluate your two-to-one decision from your last meeting to schedule a rescind vote on December first for this bylaw. I respectfully ask the three of you to think about that, and I would hope that the three of you would respect the town meeting democracy that occurred on August twenty-seventh that people put a lot of input and work into. So please do the right thing. Our town citizens are counting on you. Thank you.
Comments? No. I forgot with the town clerk. There will be early voting at Nahat Town Hall starting Monday, October twenty-second through Friday, November second. Contact the clerk's office for further information on this. Also, there will be a voter registration held in the town clerk's office on Wednesday, October seventeenth for the November sixth general election. Thank you, Peggy. Okay. New business. Green Community Committee Presentation, first reading.
So just to give you some background on this, the Green Communities Program, which the town of Nahat is attempting to become a designated green community, requires that we adopt five criteria. I believe Nahat has already adopted three of those, and two left are to develop an energy reduction plan and to have a fuel efficiency vehicle policy. So what this first reading is, is for, to introduce the policy. Diane Montite and the Green Communities Program have done a great job putting this together. Because we have, all of our vehicles owned by the town are actually exempt, we actually don't have any passenger vehicles, so we have to come up with an alternative policy that the Green Communities Program will accept. And mostly what that consists of is an anti-idling policy and also, you know, looking for the most fuel-efficient vehicles when possible, when purchasing new vehicles. This isn't, you know, something that's requiring us to take old vehicles out of order, it's when they naturally come to that point. Diane's here, if you'd like to ask her any questions. Also Neil Duffy, the Northeast Regional Coordinator for the Green Communities Program, will be here next week, or not next, the next Board of Selectmen meeting, where we will adopt this policy. So the idea here is to introduce and then adopt at the following meeting.
Diane, would you like to speak on that, please?
I'll speak here. As Tony said, thank you very much for giving an overview. We have five criteria, and as you know, the stretch code was passed by the town in April. And then we have the number one and two criteria, which are asking for a waiver of renewable energy and a large scale. Today, we received good news that that waiver letter, proposed waiver letter, because you have to review it, but we put, you know, a lot of, worked with the DOE R in order to get the content that is acceptable to them. And so I will be sharing that with you all tomorrow. And then the vehicle policy, as Tony said, and we did pass it by the school department, Tony Parentosi has done a wonderful job participating. We had the first reading on the policy with the school department last week. They approved that. Of course, they don't have any vehicles, but should they get vehicles, they would, you know, become involved in that. But at the same time, the anti-idling, because we have an alternative vehicle policy, it requires additional activities, such as having an anti-idling policy. The state of Massachusetts already has one. The school has those signs up, anti-idling and so forth, and I believe the town obviously follows the Massachusetts law. But this spells out our anti-idling policy that you will share with the municipal employees who are driving vehicles. Of course, there are certain vehicles that are exempt from that. Our first responders, police, fire, ambulance, and it's all spelled out in that document that was provided for you. And I don't know if you have any questions on that, but those two things are considered a policy, so we have a first reading and then an approval. So first of all, if you want to address anything of concern?
No.
Actually, when Diane brought this to me, I actually started digging into finding out what our policy was to enact policy. We actually, the board or the town doesn't have one where the school committee does. And actually, I think it's a good thing that we don't introduce and adopt on the same night. So one thing we'll be doing is throwing this policy onto the website for the next, you know, so for, follow in line with being transparent. And then the adoption of the policy would come at the next Board of Selectmen meeting.
Yeah. I spent six years on the school board and I really liked that. It was a double reading. It's two readings and that gives people a chance to help process it. I like that. Maybe we should adopt this.
It's something that I'm looking into and see, you know, it's a different body, so there, it won't...
Yeah, you could form it to us.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think we could use that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Diane, thank you.
You're welcome. And just one other thing, is the criteria three, which is very dense. It is the actual energy reduction plan. It's a document thirty-five pages long. It covers the ten municipal buildings. It breaks out every piece of data regarding the energy usage that was fed into a tool, the Mass Energy Insight Tool. And so we have great information for the town to use going forward, and we'll have recommendations on what to do with the funding when we receive it. We'll share that whole document with you. It has to be approved by you. We have it in draft form right now. So tomorrow it will be wrapped up and then next week we will provide that for you. It doesn't require two readings. It just requires your review.
Okay.
And approval. Our deadline is October twenty-sixth. So we're...
Eighteenth is just making it.
Yes. Everything's going to happen right away.
Gotcha.
Okay?
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you. We're open to whatever questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That sounds good. That should be... Surplus? Yeah, okay. I move the Board of Selectmen vote to declare the following as surplus materials and equipment to be disposed of in accordance with MGL Chapter Thirty-B, Section Sixteen. One, two thousand and seven Silverado pickup, VIN number one GCHK-two-four-U-six-seven-E-one, five-eight-three-one-four.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Santa Parade to be held on twelve, December twenty-second, nineteen, the eighteenth, at six P.M. I so move that, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Any discussion?
No discussion, I have none. We should, before you, before we vote, we should thank Ross Pulio. She continues on, actually it was Ross Pulio and Lieutenant Hutton that used to put this Santa Parade on, and it's a great evening for the kids, and it's a great parade with all of our public safety vehicles and, and it's, for a small town, it's a big parade. I mean, the vehicles just keep coming, flashing lights, and it's, it's quite the thing. It's, it's kind of like a picture of Norman Rockwell's out there in the western part of the state. It's a, it's a great, it's a great parade, and if you see Ross Pulio, make sure you say thanks to her.
Yeah. I think it's a great thing. I haven't missed one yet.
The Board of Selectmen will not be riding in either vehicle, so I want to let you know that in advance. Could be an assassination attempt in one of those cases.
Put the town administrator in there instead.
Yes. Oh, yes, yeah. Anybody wants to help Ross and coordinate, please, feel free. She's at the police station most days. Actually, she's there all the time. And she does a great job, not only for the town, police department, Santa Parade, she's always involved, and she's a very public-spirited individual that does a lot for the town. And I want to personally thank her for that.
Same here. Town Administrator Report.
Are we going to vote on that?
Oh, sorry, there's still a motion there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote for the Santa Parade.
Okay.
Town Administrator.
Okay, so as of September first, firefighter Jonathan Thibault transferred to the Winchester Fire Department. Jonathan was hired July first, twenty-ten, as a provisional full-time hire, then appointed July first, twenty-eleven, as a full-time firefighter for the town of Nahat. Jonathan recently completed his training as a paramedic and will be able to utilize these skills with the Winchester Fire Department. We wish Jonathan well and thank him for his service to the community. As a result of this transfer, a full-time vacancy was created. Following civil service procedures, Chief Feinberg requested a certified eligibility list from the state civil service office. Notifications were sent to twelve potential candidates. Of those twelve potential candidates, four candidates signed the certified list indicating they would accept the position. Chief Feinberg then formed an interview committee consisting of myself, Chief Feinberg, Captain Dean Palumbo, representing the officers of the fire department, firefighter Frank Papalardo, representing the fire union, Local Two-seven-one-eight, and firefighter Robert Thibault, representing the call firefighters. Three of the four candidates accepted their interview invitations. The fourth candidate had already received an offer of employment from the city of Beverly. Interviews with the remaining three candidates were held Wednesday, September twenty-sixth. Based on various factors, it was the unanimous consensus of the committee to recommend Matthew Canty for appointment. Tonight's vote would provide a conditional offer of employment contingent upon a pre-employment physical background check and physical agility test. Chief Feinberg is here, if you guys have...
Chief Comment, please.
Thank you. This decision was not an easy one to make. After we held the interviews, we, the interview committee, held a lengthy discussion discussing the merits of all the candidates. All three candidates have a tremendous number of merits, but Mr. Canty stood out above the other two. It gives me great pleasure this evening to bring forward to you and introduce you to Matthew Canty. Matthew? Consideration for appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the conditional offer of employment to Matthew Canty. Great family, great family.
Second?
As a full-time firefighter contingent upon a pre-employment physical background check and physical test. Again, congratulations, Matthew.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Matthew, congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Welcome to the force.
By the way, Matthew, I want to commend you for serving on the callment all these years.
Yeah.
And your, your performance was outstanding.
Thank you very much.
I, you know, I hear from the regular firefighters and Captain Palumbo and the chief, and I thought, you know, when one's looking, you know, we're in the background, we just, we go by the town administrator and the chief to make the recommendation, but they couldn't have made a finer, a finer offer to you because you, you, I tell you, I really, you've come from a great family, by the way.
I think, didn't I have your car behind my garage for a couple of years? Do you have a car?
Uh, probably not. Well, I think your son bought it for me.
Your, your brother's car, maybe?
Oh, possibly, yeah.
Yeah.
That makes more sense.
So, I'm just really happy that you're, that you got picked, because you're a good kid, and I've known you since you were a little kid, and you're gonna do a great job. So, I thank you for that.
Good job, Matt. Thanks, guys.[619.79][619.79][applause]
Call the vote. Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, before, so, I'm only getting ready there. You wanna, oh, you wanna, okay, the-
Yeah, so, with Matthew Canty coming from the call list onto the full fi, full-time, that opens up another vacancy on our call, on our on-call list, which we have a number of vacancies there. But James Lowe, son of Marion Tim, was a call firefighter here from July twenty-thirteen until December twenty-sixteen, when he resigned citing time availability due to a new full-time job. Jim has approached Chief Feinberg and requested to be reappointed to the department. He has now had several conversations with Jim, consulted with Captain Palumbo and Lieutenant Doyle, who have worked with him longer than him, and he would like to recommend him for appointment as a call firefighter within the Nahat Fire Department. Tonight's vote would provide a conditional offer of employment contingent upon a pre-employment physical and background check.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the conditional offer of appointment to James Lowe, another great individual, as a call firefighter contingent upon a pre-employment physical and a background check. I so move that, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it. Discussion.
He's another individual. He worked for us for many years in public works, and hopefully, we can get him back here soon. Uh, he's a good kid, and I, and he's a pretty good golfer, too. I know he's one of, he's down there. He's, he, this will be a welcome addition to the call department.
Uh, congratulations, James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Um, another quick thing I want to add into the town administrator report here is, today, we actually received the notice to award for the Tudor Beach Repair Project. Given the time of year and the need to get this project started as soon as possible, I'm asking that the board move to approve the notice to award and start the contract process with MJS Construction. And there's all the background information of the procurement process and of the bidders and, and the project that we have selected. And then, so, next, the process here, would you, you would be approving the town administrator to begin the contract process and send the notice to award to MJS Construction, and then they would sign the contract, send it back to us, and then so forth. The rest of officials here in town would sign the contract after that.
Okay, I move at the, uh, to approve the town administrator to send the notice to award to MJS Construction Incorporated to proceed with the contracting process to repairs to the Tudor Beach seawall.
Second.
Further discussion?
Um, it's great, it's good news, Tony, that, because people have been asking about, you know, when, when we're gonna get it done. But I would also add, we need to get, um, we can't forget Parrot Road, Fallon Way. As a matter of fact, there was a, uh, meeting the other night, a con-con meeting the other night, and some of the damage out there, where the rocks have been placed, has caused some damage to this, uh, couple's home. So, we need to move on that, and we need to get, get those people some relief there, too. Because the, the infrastructure's been undermined, you got gas lines that are gonna be exposed, and we had to move pretty quickly on it during the, the March storm. So, I would like to get that on the agenda for next, the next town, the next Selectmen's meeting, if that's possible. See if we can, we can do with that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Um, before I forget, um, I want to have two people appointed to the MVP Committee, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, Gino Spelta and Brendan Baranek, I believe is back there. Is that Brendan? I can't really see him.
Yeah.
Yeah. They've come forward, um, for people that don't know what it's, it's all about. It's about climate change, sea level rising, and how we're gonna, um, yeah, speaking of-
And how we're gonna, um, attack it, how we're gonna, you know, work, work with it, and, uh, what are we gonna do? What are, how are we gonna be resilient to climate change and, uh, and all, and sea level rise? So, we are gonna, we're planning to have our workshop in probably January. We have our people already designated who are gonna ask. We don't know if they're all gonna come, we don't know if, if they're all gonna accept, but we pretty much have a good, good bunch of people that are gonna go to it. But Gino has stepped up, and so hasn't Brendan, so, I motion to, I would entertain a motion that we approve those two for that board.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion?
Done.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Um, also, just want to get on record that we have the warrant for the Board of Selectmen to sign for the November sixth election. No, no motion needed, but just to put it on record that you guys will be signing this after the, after the meeting. Next on the list is, um, we have a group here, um, production company, it's, uh, that wants to come to the town in Nahat, feature the town in Nahat in their production. They have a, I don't know if you've ever seen A Tiny House, it's, um, basically a small structure that's on a, on a trailer. Um, it's, it's an environmentally friendly, um, structure. It's, it's runs on Duncan. It's, uh, it's actually energized by coffee grounds. Um, it's a, it's, goes hand in hand with this green movement. They're actually here and can talk a little bit about what they're proposing. And so, what they're, want to do is be in town for the next month. Um, they want to do a little bit of production to showcase, uh, the beauty of Nahat, showcase, um, different areas in town, one of which being East Point. And, you know, the reason why they're attracted to that is because of how open and undeveloped the space is. Um, and also Bailey's Hill. So, they'll be spending some time in both locations, um, and I'd welcome them up to talk a little bit about-
Sure.
It's also, you know, I might add, it's certainly a revenue, uh, source for the town as well.
Go over the mic, please, yeah.
Uh, thank you, guys, for letting us be here tonight. I'm Kent Breyard. I work at an ad agency, uh, in Boston. We, um, partner with the James Mucker Company and Duncan Donuts, and we have built a tiny home that runs entirely on used coffee grounds. So, we have, uh, diverted sixty-five thousand pounds of coffee grounds and turned it into a biofuel that powers this tiny home. Uh, and so, what we would like to do is show, show everyone that we can, what we can do by having the home run on Duncan. We want to highlight the town of Nahat. East Point is a beautiful location, it's like a, a postcard up there. Um, and, you know, there's nothing else around it. It is, uh, obviously a contentious topic, um, so we don't want to stay there too long.[1125.23][1125.23][laughing] Um, so, we, we're proposing to, to film, to film a, a little bit on, on, on the, the point for a few days, and then move the home from there to Bailey's Hill, where we would then have, um, residents, is what we'd say. We, we let people come in, invite people to, to stay in the home for two nights at a time in order to experience how their home can run on Duncan as well. And there would be some, some contest winners, like, is kinda how that would be determined, and then some lucky Airbnb guests. Uh, so, that's a, kind of an overview of the program. We would be, um, here from October eighth through November fifteenth. And, uh, if there's any production questions, uh, my friend here can answer those. We're happy to take any questions that we can.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, I, it's, it's, it's pretty wild what you're, you're doing, but you, you can't go in it, you're too tall.
Sorry?
You're too tall just to live in that.
You know what? I, I can stand comfortably all through, all through the place. It's, when, when you wake up, the, the bed is a loft bed.
Yeah.
And I can even, like, sit up straight in the bed and be just fine. No head hitting, like, I was a little bit worried about that when I first got in there, but-
It's a king-size bed in the very-
I've seen it. I've seen it on TV. It's pretty cool, pretty cool stuff, you know, uh, what you're doing. So, I, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
I'm all for it.
What's the square footage of the home?
Two hundred and seventy-five square feet.
Do you have an extra lodge, uh, planned out?
Sorry?
I mean, do you have an extra lodge? I mean, I, I'm not gonna fit no bed, I mean, yeah.
Sir, I've, I've spent the last month inside that home, and I'm very comfortable.
You're very comfortable?
I am very comfortable now.
Oh. I mean, this is, I mean, I, I, when I first saw the request, I, you know, I just started laughing because I, I'm saying, you see 'em, we see, I see these on TV, commercials, you know, these small homes, and I think we're gonna get a lot of funny, you know, this is, this is a great story, you know. Bridget, are you over there? You should say, do you have pictures of it?
Yes.
We have some in here.
Oh, here it is, here. Maybe give it to the reporter. I mean, this is, this is gonna be huge, the Nahat, you're gonna be in both, you know, especially East Point.
Exactly, and that's, that's the thing, is this is an opportunity that, this will be the first time we offer people to, to stay in the home. We launched the home in New York City this week, and so, it's, it's brand-new, it's already getting a lot of press, um, already, and so, this is, it's just the next step. It's, it's something that has never been done before.
Oh, I'm in favor. The timing's perfect. You know why?
It's a small, small place.
Northeasters wanna wonder what the hell we're doing up there with that tiny house.[1291.41][1291.41][laughing] I, that's great. I think, I think it's, I think it'd be, it's gonna be, you know, it's, it's, I'm in favor of this, yeah.
Would there be separate hours that we can go and get into it?
So, we, we're holding right now a full, like, three or four days around Halloween, and we, we would like to probably open that time up to members of the community here in Nahat to, maybe it's a trick-or-treat night around the house in, at Bailey's Point, something, something along those lines, to really get the, like, everyone here a chance to, to go through the home, for sure.
Did the town administrator advise you about the security? We're gonna be hiring, uh, police officer and fireman to make sure that, you know, the twenty-four-seven while they're there, just in case, okay, if something happens. And the people going up there, you realize there's a cliff up there, and we gotta stay away from that, and that's gonna be, uh, I don't want to, I, I just don't want anyone going over, you know, going over the edge, okay? And that's gonna be, we gotta secure that area, and our police officers and firemen will make sure of that. And they'll be with that whole twenty-four-seven. You've agreed to pay for these details, of course.
Of course.
Yeah.
I'd say, you know, Kent and Fawz, I met with them today and took them around town, and they are more than happy to, um, have our public safety officers with them during the production period, um, though, you know, and especially up at East Point, given the, um, dangers along the edge there. And, you know, also, they are, they've also asked to promote the town within, so, they're gonna have some people staying in there, and they want to have some pamphlets on what the town has to offer, you know, things of golf course, historical society, um, if there's any, um, you know, fishermen that, you know, want to take people out, you know, type of, um, service like that, you know, they're, they're looking for ways to promote the town, which I think is an added benefit.
Well, no one knows that we exist over here, and I'm not sure I want that to happen, you understand?
Yeah.
This, we really, you know, that, that causeway's a good, you know, stopgap for us, you know what I mean? I mean, we like visitors, but I don't want you to bring too many in here.
I, I understand that.[1438.23][1438.23][laughing]
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to see if we could get this maybe on the internet, on the, uh, website. It explains the home run, uh, that runs on Duncan. Um, maybe they can put it on the, the Green Communities, uh, portion of it, because it is a green, green house.
Yep.
Diane will allow it, the chairman?
Certainly, I can make sure that we get that added to the website. And, you know, lastly, I'll just say that I spoke with, uh, our DPW and police and fire about this already. They're on board, um, they support it, and they're gonna be part of the process, uh, throughout, along the line.
Yeah, I talked to the superintendent this afternoon, he said he, uh, gonna, um, he's selected a site up there for you, and I think, have you seen him yet? You haven't seen him?
We have been, we've been speaking with Tony-
Yeah.
...a lot, and I'm sure people, we've been speaking with people.
Well, the superintendent, the superintendent will show you exactly where, you know-
We've seen options in person.
It's to your recommendation and specs.
Yep.
Are you looking for a vote from us?
Yes.
Yeah, because it, it actually is a-
Okay.
-event permit, in a way.
We don't have it, but I'll give, I'll entertain a motion that we allow, um, what's the name of the-
The home that runs on Duncan.
Okay, home that runs on Duncan's, uh, corporation or company.
No.
Allow them to have their, um, utilize the town's resources, their, their park facilities to put their home on it, uh, Bailey's Hill, East Lodge Park, and boroughs.
Those are the two places. Those are the, we'll be in those two, yes.
And the dates, please.
I put the date.
October eighth through November fifteenth.
November fifteenth, okay.
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Further discussion?
I got a question?
Yes?
Um, two things. One, is, is it winter-rated? Because coming November, all right, and the other thing is, between the two, because if you're gonna be up at East Point and Bailey's, you can be subject to a lot of wind.
Yes.
Yes.
We've taken all those into consideration with the, uh, with the locations that we do production with. I'm not a big, I'm actually specialized in name, I'm not, we've been-
That's on your committee.
Uh, we've been briefed on every possible scenario, and we'll continue to keep. I'll look out for all of them. I choose that man.
What's his name?
Brendan Baranek. Um, yeah, it's supposed to withstand hurricane waves.
Okay, if you have that Halloween, you can reach it.
Well, cross that finger, it's enough. I'm looking forward to that.
Okay.
Bring eggs.
All right, hold, 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 hold. That was from Brendan who asked about the wind and about Halloween and eggs, et cetera, because no one in town could hear that, let alone us. Thank you.
No, no, no problem. Okay. All those in favor? All those in favor? Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone has heard of us, it's okay to read it out.
Okay, I move to approve the memorial bench policy as presented.
Wait a minute.
You want to read it?
Yeah, I want to get to it first.
If you, do you want some background, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, background while I find it, yeah.
Um, in, on, uh, May fifteenth, twenty-fourteen, Board of Selectmen meeting, there was a vote for a moratorium on new benches. Um, the motion was a temporary moratorium until the town administrator could make us, uh, conduct a study of other locations where benches may be appropriate, and also suggested an inventory of benches currently installed, uh, be prepared.
Background while I find it, yeah.
Um, in, on May fifteenth, twenty fourteen, Board of Selectment meeting, there was a vote for a moratorium on new benches. The motion was a temporary moratorium until the town administrator could make us, conduct a study of other locations where benches may be appropriate. And also suggest that an inventory of benches currently installed be prepared. So, this motion would be a partial lift of that moratorium. This is just for existing locations of benches that are in need of repair and that the current residents or sponsors of those benches do not want to repair them themselves or want to take them down. So, there's actually an inventory list that we're gonna put on the website as well. Folks, benches that need repair, those sponsors were sent letters. We did get a, a number of folks that did not respond. So, we're gonna put that on the website. We're not gonna give those benches away. But for those that have responded and said, we're, you know, we're gonna take the bench or you can give our spot to someone else, that's what this policy would be for.
And this came up last meeting, and Richie had asked that there be a map. A map is included, Richie?
Yep.
Very nicely done. I will read the policy. All bench locations on town property are subject to pre-existing locations. Applicants should specify the desired location and if an alternative, alternate location would be acceptable. New locations may not be available at time of application. And the policy as written, as you said, in case I messed it up.
Further discussion?
Done. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the memorial bench policy as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote?
Jeff Blake from KP Law is here. Last, at the last Board of Selectment meeting, there were, we talked about what the procedure would be for another town meeting. There were some questions about that. So, Jeff Blake is here and can answer any of those questions that the Board of Selectment might have.
Did you have, you had a couple of questions before?
No. Well, I have the question, especially with this eminent domain thing coming up. Again, I don't see a need for a special town meeting. I think that, if that, this comes true, this is gonna be a huge win-win for us, the town people. And these individuals have agreed and have come forward, you know, and, you know, and I, I called each of you and the town administrator about this phone call I had from California. He was, the individual was in California at the time. And it's a win-win for the town in Nahat. This is huge. And there'll be no need for a special town meeting if they proceed, you know, and I think that will be, you know, as I said earlier, the money involved in this and the people that, we're gonna find out tonight. I see the lawyer back there for, on the eminent domain. And I see the cost of the, the cost of this thing is, is gonna be, they're gonna pay for it. So, the town in Nahat will not have to pay a dime if we move that way. And I just don't think there's a need to have it. I think this, this will come true and we can move it that way. If not, you could, all you have to do is, I postpone the vote, you know, pull back on the vote. And we'll, we've got the April town meeting, come the annual town meeting, coming up. And if something, we'll know by then if that doesn't happen. This way, here, we can move the special town meeting, cancel this one, and put it in April. And it'll be the way to go. We'll have our facts and figures and the numbers. And I, I think that's the way to go. Give us some time and, you know, instead of rushing, we don't need to rush now. The April town meeting is the end of April. And of course, there are articles, we have to put them in by the end of January so that we have it in the warrant. So, we've got time, and that's what I would do. That's what I'm recommending, my recommendation is.
Could I get the process that you
Sure, sure, sure.
Special town meeting, please?
I, I'm sure you've held special town meetings before. They're not all that much different.
Excuse me, would you introduce yourself so
I'm sorry. I'm Jeff Blake from KP Law, as the town administrator indicated. But I'm Jeff Blake from KP Law. Sure, the process is not that much different than holding any other town meeting. There's a fourteen-day notice period. You have to put together a warrant. Warrant has to be on display, has to be noticed at least, like I said, fourteen days in advance. I think the issues that, that you guys are anticipating, or at least from what I've, I take away from speaking with others in the firm that you've spoken to, is at the last special town meeting, you had more-than-capacity crowd here. So, what we would need to do at that point is we would need to likely break up the meeting or find a venue, and it has to be in-town, the geographic limitations of town, a venue that could hold the number of people that you think would, would show up. The easiest thing would be to have a, a place that could hold the number of people. But let's say, for the sake of argument, since I'm here, and I think this is what you wanna hear, is that you, you have Town Hall and you don't think it can fit the number of people they're gonna have. So, what we would have to do is we'd have to have like a satellite location, school, church, I don't know if there's a large bed and breakfast or, or something to the effect. But anyway, something like that. We could set up a tent out here on, on the, the front lawn of Town Hall. But once we've done that, we've notified it or figured out what we're gonna do there, we would essentially have to duplicate every effort that we have here at Town Hall there. We would have to appoint another moderator, an assistant moderator. That's typically done or can be done through unanimous consent of a meeting. Hopefully, just one would come forward. If more than one comes forward, we may have to have a, an election right there on the, on town meeting floor. But it's my experience, and I've had to do a couple of these, my experience is that there's usually one other person that's willing to step up and, and become the moderator. We have issues of trying to figure out and make sure that we have votes taken, that nobody from the satellite area votes down there and then drives up here and votes again. I don't know if there's gonna be a secret ballot. I have to assume, I think, the last time there was a secret ballot, so let's say, say for the sake of argument, there's a secret ballot this time. Again, we would have to check in the voters. There, there's no exact right way to do it. But I would suggest if you're worried that there may be some redundancy in the voting, what we would end up doing is we would, we would check everybody in to this location, check everybody into, to that location down there. And when we notice the meeting, I think it would be best to notice the meeting that says, everybody whose last name ends in, or from A to G goes to Town Hall and from G, from G forward to Z goes to the satellite. Or we could do it by address. We'd have to find some way of being able to kinda designate where you're going to go. Once that's done, we would have to set up loudspeakers, we'd have to set up audio. Most of the time that I've ever done this, we've also have, because nowadays, the, the technology's so good, we oftentimes will have audio/video on the screen. We would have to obviously have some two-way communication with the moderators so that when we have two people at this mic that wanna talk, they talk. And then at the satellite location, we would have the moderator down there say, "Mr. Moderator, I got three that need to talk." They could talk. They would be up on the screen. And everybody here could hear them and, and vice versa. When people are down here talking, everybody there could hear them. So, it's a, it's a, it's a two-way back and forth. Once we've done that, if you, if there is a concern about, like I say, redundant voting, people voting twice, then I would suggest that we could have people check in again. Once it comes up time to vote, you have the people check in again, you get your people with their checklist, and they hand them a ballot. And they hand them a ballot. Same thing happens down there. There are electronic ways of checking in people nowadays. There's one called PollPad, which is a rental situation where if we've got internet connection, we can, we have like real-time so that everybody down there knows what everybody's doing up here as far as check-in. They also have, what are known as, I, I, for lack of a better word, I call them clickers. They have, it's like you see in, in the Senate or in the House of Representatives, they actually, when you walk in, they hand you a clicker that says, yes, no, I think, and abstain. And so, everybody that's a registered voter could get one of those. And then when it comes time to call the vote, they come in and there, there's a, there's a receiver, receives it, and it could give, it can tally the votes up there. Now, the only downside to that is, and oftentimes, in a representative town meeting, those clickers are assigned to a particular representative. When it's just a town meeting with not representative, those are usually just handed out. So, you know, I guess theoretically speaking, somebody could get one, decide that they wanna leave before the votes, and they can hand it to somebody over here. So, somebody could have two. But these are, you know, I, these are some of the safeguards that, that we could put in. These are some of the, the electronic stuff that, that's out there that we could, that we could use. I under-
Good question.
Sure, sure.
Can, can they vote during the deliberation? Or do they have to wait till after the deliberation and then vote?
I don't understand.
In other words, town meeting is all about deliberation?
That's right.
Deliberate, and then you, then you can vote.
Yep.
Can they, can there be like a period that the, the voting machine is set up? Can somebody just walk up and throw their ballot in during, while they're deliberating?
No, no. I, what, what we would do is we would, well, this is how I envision it. And again, there's no exact way of doing it. It'd be up to the moderator, it'd be up to the, the town clerk, it'd be up to the, the person handling the check-in. But the way I envision doing it is, once we call the vote, and I got a couple of towns out there that require a secret ballot for every appropriation over $25,000. So, you can imagine, they have a lot of secret ballots. But they call for the vote, and then typically, we would say, okay, rows one, two, and three, go up, one, row two, and three, we go up to the table, they check in, they get their ballot, they'd come in, boom. Then they sit back down. And, and we would have it going just like that. And that would be after the debate is over. Because everybody, under the, under the law, everybody needs to be able to hear and participate. So, once we start this getting up, getting ballots, doing, you know, checking your ballot and putting it in here, it starts to get a lot of commotion. And I can envision that, that speakers couldn't be heard and, and people would get confused, so.
But at our town meetings, the moderator decides the time and how many people are there? He says, "We now have a quorum, we can move on." You could start your town meeting then, discussion could begin.
Yep.
People could be watching it at home.
Mm-hmm.
This is why I'm trying to get at one venue.
Mm-hmm.
People could be watching it at home or could be outside, and someone calls a question or debate is over. Everyone leaves the building. They come back in and they get checked and they get handed a ballot by one of the town employees working.
So, are you asking, could the people at home then come and vote after they've sat? Yeah. The only-
It's gonna be a line outside. People could come from watching it on TV, come up and get their chance to vote.
If they don't already part of deliberation, right?
Right.
Yeah, I, I think that people, provided obviously that they are registered or their residence, and they have the ability to vote, sure. But the, the one issue that you run into sometimes with that is, is you, it's, you can't hold the vote open to the extent that it really becomes a ballot, four, five, seven hours.
No, no.
So, yeah.
The vote is called, and then it takes about twenty minutes to get people out and back in or however long.
Yeah.
Then it's, that's it.
And, and I think, you know, the moderators, the moderator could say, "Hey, look, I'm starting to hear redundancy in some of these arguments. If we don't have anything new, I'm gonna call for, I'm gonna call for a vote here very soon. So, you people at home, if you decide you wanna come here, you better come."
Right.
Because, you know, you're gonna get to a point where the moderator isn't gonna hold this thing open forever.
No, 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 it shouldn't. I agree. Okay. Thank you.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I think my recommendation to have it in the annual town meeting is a lot better. And if we get an overflow, the only way to do it is you're gonna have to, especially for the annual town meeting, is the only place you could hold it is down at Lowlands with a tent. People want, in this town, will not wanna be split, you know, the satellites, you know what I mean, on an, especially an annual town meeting. And, you know, you're talking all these communications and speakers and video and, you know, you know, it's like, we had that in, in a major food company. We had communications, we had all the offices set up and it was like a national sales meeting, you know, for a couple thousand people.
Mm-hmm.
And we had it all across the country. And, and that's, you know, you're talking, and once it's set up, you get the video, everyone's talking. But this here is, this is the town in Nahat. I mean, we're not, I, I, you know, we're, if we need to get room, we, all the people wanna be in the same room. I mean, so if we have to, the only way we could do it is put, put up a, a tent down at Lowlands, because the country club, Johnson School, all these places are not large enough to hold any sizable numbers, anything over 400, you know what I'm saying? It just couldn't do it. I mean, just, I mean, and the, who's gonna determine, who's gonna go to the satellite in A to Z? I mean, it's crazy. I, I totally, I think you should forget the special town meeting altogether. And then I would put everything, if you're gonna do it, at the annual warrant in, in April. So, we don't have all this.
How do you know, I mean, what's, what's to say that it's not gonna happen at the annual town meeting?
Well, I prepare for it. I would prepare for it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't-
How do you prepare for it? How do you, you're saying that you can't prepare for it?
Well, you, you have to prepare for it.
We, we are. That's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, but you're, you're gonna prepare for the annual town meeting, right?
We're gonna prepare for this one.
For which one?
The special town meeting. But that's what we're trying to do.
For December first?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I, I-
So, what you're saying, Richie, is that you don't-
I disagree.
You wanna have an annual town meeting, how do you prepare for that? And we, when you have a warrant that's got forty items on it, or fifty items, and you have to go through that whole warrant, and there's 600 people here then? What do we, how do we do that?
Again, you know, we're gonna have to prepare for that.
Doesn't it matter what anybody has said here tonight? Doesn't it matter that 600 signatures have been given?
Can I ask a question?
One question.
Wait, 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 let's, the selectmen, let's, the selectmen. We'll get to you, but let's, the discussion with the selectmen right now.
Yeah, well-
Yeah, yeah.
On what you're saying, that's your opinion. You voted no.
That is my opinion.
Right. And my opinion is what I just stated, so.
Is to what? To have the special meeting December first? Yes.
It doesn't matter if we have it in April or if we have it in December, Richie. I mean, either you want it or you don't want it. Have it in April, you're gonna have a warrant that's got forty thing, items on it, and it's gonna be a disaster. You're gonna have 600 people here for that.
This is a one-item special town meeting. So, people can come from where they are, they can watch and come up, and the process will be served correctly. Done.
So, you're gonna have 600 people or 500 people, anything over 250, show up here in this town meeting?
I didn't say that. There will be a quorum, there will be discussion. People will then watch when they can come up here, 'cause people in this town are very smart. And then they'll say, "Okay, I'm going up to vote." In your opinion, in my opinion, that's why we're here. I have my opinion, you have yours. You have yours.
I'd much rather have it, and I, I would much rather have it away from this, the annual town meeting, 'cause I wouldn't want that to be-
Yeah. If it's one out of forty-two, that's crazy. I mean, you'll have too many people here for that. It'd be just, you know, the town meeting will go on for three or four days.
Carl Jenkins, again, still at 339 Nahat Road. Thank you for that presentation. I took about twelve, thirteen, fourteen minutes to try to explain what a process would be to have a vote that we already had. I know, I don't think you were here, were you?
I was not.
Okay. So, one of the complaints was it was very hot. And, and that, and it's unfair because it was hot. Who's gonna guarantee December second, it's not going to be cold and rainy? When we lost a bunch of our, especially our elder residents because of the heat, do you really think they are going to come out because they're watching on TV and saying, "Come on out and vote," by the way, to get thrown back out of the building, potentially in the rain and cold, to come back in? Now, if that were me, I would rather have been here in the heat. So, I don't understand how that's gonna be any different than what you're suggesting, number one. what you're suggesting, number one. Oh, excuse me. Number two, I heard you say, "The town's got no money."
Town what?
Has no money.
I didn't say that.
Okay, the town has money. So I just want to make sure that's clear. So, because, because the description of the events that are going to have to occur, and by the way, just for the record, our AV systems in here are terrible. This is a good night. So, to think we're going to set up AV systems in three, two different, three different places, we're going to have it on our screens, we're going to have it on all this, I, I don't know about you guys, I know what this stuff costs. So, I question whether the town-
So you know what a town meeting costs?
I'm sorry?
You know what a town meeting costs?
No, I know what the AV equipment costs. Did you?
Okay, no, I'm sorry.
I haven't heard any expense discussion about what that would take. I'd love to hear it, if you have it, please.
No, I don't. And, and, and I'm sorry, I, I thought, I, I, I'm losing my hearing, so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
My question was-
Equipment. I'm talking equipment. Okay? So all I'm saying is, to wrap it up, you're going to, you're going to take a, a situation that we had, and you're going to move it to another day, make it so complicated it ta- we haven't even figured it out, to be honest with you. You're going to add people coming in and out of buildings. I'm sorry, I don't understand how that is going to be any better, and I suggest that's going to result in another vote not too long after that.
Can I ask a question?
No. I'm going to give, no, please don't. Two minutes each of you. You're not even supposed to be speaking this as business pod.
Mr. Chairman?
No.
Just one suggestion-
Please.
About pulling the people out of the building. I think it would be easier, when people check in with the registrars, that they be given a ballot, and that the ballot be submitted to the machine. That way, you aren't taking the time, possibly in cold weather, to, to evict the people in order to re-register them to vote. They hang on to their ballot for the duration of the town meeting.
Thank you.
Also, I've run into a situation where you've had to split venues, and I have some ideas about that, too.
Yeah, but we're, we're just, go ahead.
We had around 650 people that came to that, that checked into that town meeting, I believe. Excuse me? Oh. I think we had around 650 people, I'm not exactly sure on the number, that actually checked into that meeting. Only 565 voted. What happened to the other?
And, and you're right.
60 or 70 people-
The same problem will happen in April, so.
All right. Two minutes, please.
I'll take less than a minute.
Thank you.
Quick suggestion, no matter what way you do it, if you have a, a multi-ballot situation, I'd like to suggest that you do all the other balloting first by voice voting, and then go to the other procedure that requires the paper ballot. Also, and if, if you have any indication of what the ratio, relative costs of the different types, not the price, prices themselves, but like, this one is twice as much as that one, or whatever, you know, I'd be interested in hearing that.
I'm sorry, I don't.
The three, I think you elucidated three methods that this could be handled by. That was my understanding. The voting.
Yeah.
All right. What, what they cost relative to each other.
Yeah, I, I don't have that-
Oh, okay.
-figure. I'm sorry.
Brandon Bronnik Olmstead, 2 Summer Street. Osmoor had a technical question. What is the building capacity for the town hall versus the school or other town properties? If we're talking about that many people, I know there's issues with the fire warden at the last town meeting. Just, building capacity-wise, what are our options?
Right. That's what we're figuring out. Thank you.
Nick Bulkin, 333 Nahat Road. Just quickly, I have DirecTV. I don't get to see the meetings. I'm sure there are other people in town. I believe it's only Comcast or cable TV where people can actually watch what's going on. Thanks.
Peg Heinrichs, 31 Worf Street. This is an interesting conversation. I would just like to remind you that there has already been a vote. And there is a lot of support for that process of democracy to hold, and that is it. And I certainly am not in favor of redoing votes. So, that's it. I hope that was life in America.
Chairman, if I may briefly, I'd like to clear up. I, I must not have been clear. I was not suggesting that you would evict everybody out of the building and then bring them back in. What I was suggesting is that you'd do one or two rows, they would go up, everybody else would stay seated, they'd get their ballots, and you'd do it that way. So everybody would stay in, in the building. And with respect to the video, the, the statute provides that you have to have, it has to be connected by a public address system and loudspeakers. When I had said that there was a screen, what I was talking about is other communities that I've been in, but I think the bare minimum is a public address system and loudspeakers. Just like we have here. Obviously, it would have to be a two-way situation where people could hear, but, so I just wanted to clear that up.
Yeah. And what- What we have?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sitting home in my night clothes with my slippers. I can't believe it. You people talking about having another vote? Don't you understand plain English? Don't you understand that this is a home, a home rule organization? Here, we go by the rule of law, rule of law. The people voted. They gave you and told you they didn't want this to happen. And you're going to turn it over? If you try to do this, I'm going to the Attorney General, and I'm going to the Secretary of State, and point out that you people don't know how to run a government.
I'd like to ask Mr. Carson, what about the school vote? And the, and the, before you get up, what about the school vote that we had to do over? And what about the Valley Road School that we had to do over? The super separate town meetings that we had to do over, because, I just told you, what about the school vote that we did, the yes/no vote? Do you recall that?
Yes.
Okay. And we, and it was, the margin was huge. This was seven votes, okay?
Seven what?
It doesn't ma-
Seven votes at one.
So did you, so did you-
Seven votes at one.
Okay, so at one. So now, I'm asking you, were you in favor of having the other vote for the school?
We had a vote for the school.
We had a vote for a school. We, we, the, the school override, three or four years ago, we had. You recall it?
No, I don't.
Okay. So we had a special town, we had two special town meetings for that.
Excuse me, excuse me, selectmen Enzo.
Yeah.
I resent you taking on a senior member of the community, and Tom, you know, I resent, I, 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 no, I resent, I resent you going after Tom Carson, who's the former mayor of Lynn, and great, great individual. You know?
He is a great individual.
He's a great individual. And I do not like the dialogue that you had with him just then.
I asked him a question, Richie.
You asked nothing. You, you're demanding questions about the Valley Road School, and I can answer that very well, thank you. That Valley Road School went to five committees. It took us eight years.
How many, how many special town meetings, Richie?
We had five, six spec- no special time, annual town meetings.
No.
And there was six committees on it. Okay? Believe me. So don't- Yeah. Tom, yeah, yeah, Tom.
I'm just asking you a question.
I don't want you getting upset, okay? It ain't worth it. I want you, you're, you're a great guy, and I just, this ain't worth it, Tom, that you get upset. I, I don't want anyone on this board attacking you. I understand that.
So what do I, what do we tell the people that want to have it?
Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me.
All right. No more, please. I have a police officer here.
Excuse me.
Yeah?
Excuse me.
Yes, Julie.
Julie Tarmy, 3440 Steps Lane. This is what upsets me most. Most of you know, first of all, I respect everybody's position. And we all pull together to keep Nahat what it is. But it's this kind of behavior that is very upsetting. I've been here before speaking to you. I voted against the bylaw, everybody knows that. That was my right. But I also do not support a special town meeting. We voted. Just because we had several special town meetings about other things, doesn't mean that they were right. We voted. It should be done. If there are enough people in town who do not agree with the bylaw that we voted on, then they should write a petition, as the folks who brought this bylaw to you did, and present it for the next annual town meeting. I understand the concerns about capacity, but you need to be prepared for that regardless of whether it's a special town meeting or your annual town meeting. To get us to a point where we're verbally attacking each other is not the way to go. I beg that you use calm waters at this point, please. I tried to watch this meeting from home, and the video is terrible. So, perhaps instead of spending money on a special town meeting, we could invest in a better audiovisual, which we would need if we went to satellite and all those other things in the future. The vote was made. I don't support a special town meeting. I would support anybody that wanted to bring it to the annual town meeting. I voted. My vote was not on the winning side, and I'm okay with that, because it was a democratic process. And if we set the precedent that every time we are unhappy with the way the vote goes, that we can put forward a petition to have another meeting, let's vote again. Let, what's to stop us from trying to change the vote five times? So please, just think about that. Let's, tempers down. I understand. I'm passionate about this, just like anybody else. But please, calm.
I'd like to ask Mr. Wambach if he would agree to have it at the, at the annual town meeting, to change, to try to rescind the vote. Is that what you, is that what you want, Richie?
I'm fine. I'm fine with the annual town meeting. I have no problem with that.
So, you're saying that we just rescind it? What, what's the difference?
You should cancel, you should, we, we, we should move to cancel the December-
We should cancel both. We shouldn't have it at all. We should just forget it, and, and let the bylaws be the bylaw.
That's, if that, that's up to you.
Because there's no difference, there is no, Richie, there's no difference between having it at the annual town meeting or the special town meeting. You're saying that we should rescind the vote at an annual town meeting, which makes no sense. They're thinking that you're okay with the bylaw, when in fact, you're not.
I, I, listen, again.
No, Richie, you've already explained yourself to me. Please. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Closing announcements. Vote-hauling days.
The question I have, Mr. Chairman, is that December 1st date for the special town meeting on? Or off? I'm confused.
No, don't be confused. It's on. Vote-hauling days, Monday, October 8th and Saturday, October 13th. Call Jocelyn Marine at 978-462-9717 to schedule an appointment. Leaf collection days, 10/9, 10/15, 10/22, 10/29. What is it? Is that the leaf on the, leaves on the curb?
Yeah, bags.
Oh, bags, bags, too, okay. Adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn to executive session, not to return to regular session, under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A 6. To discuss the potential purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. If the chairman declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, a vote regarding whether to go into executive session is expected, and votes may occur during executive session. Roll call vote.
Aye.
I, I-
Aye, unanimous. We are adjourned.
I'll be right back.
Oh.
Disgusting.